I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. First is roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
And Councilmember Payne Donovan and Councilmember Ryan asked to be excused. Move to excuse.
Second.
It's been moved. It's been moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. They're excused. Next is our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. Just a couple of things to report tonight. One, as you can see, our new deputy city manager started today.
Yay!
And I'm sure it has not been a whirlwind for her. Had a lot of meetings today, back and forth, but she's getting settled in and will be ready to go. The other thing I had to report, just minor, 98% of our staff has completed their Public Records Act training. Very important to get that completed, and I'm happy to say that with the help of our city attorney, we were able to get that done relatively quickly. So, very proud of that and happy that we're compliant. That's all I have. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you for that report. Welcome, of course. Yesterday, no coffee with the city. Are we scrapping that? I, for whatever reason, thought it could have happened and it didn't happen, so.
Yeah, we are continuing that, just on a different schedule, and we're going to start calling that Terrace Talk. Coffee with the City during the evening seemed a little weird to me, so we're going to call it something else. But we are going to continue that tradition, and that will happen approximately two weeks after the next newsletter goes out. We want to have a topic teed up for the community to ask us about and hopefully increase participation in that event.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Did you just say a date or you're thinking of a new date?
No, we do have a date. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I'll be happy.
Like a steady date?
Yes.
It's still going to be Wednesdays at 6:00 or is it all?
No, it should, it'll continue on the same day of the week. But it'll be a different schedule as far as, you know, it won't be once a month. It'll be a little bit spread out to make that contact, that those conversations more impactful.
Oh, okay.
All right, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. So next, we have a special presentation from the Snow Isle Libraries Executive, well, the deputy executive. Yes, but we have, yes, we do have a whole team here.
So you didn't hear all of my fumbling?
Oh, no, it was.
Oh, it was?
No, it was.
Redman's on.
Redman's on.
We can't see the red.
And it has to move closer to you.
Bring it closer. Better? All right. Mayor Matsumoto Wright and members of the council, my name is David Duranty. Thank you for the technical support, first off, and then thank you for having us here today. I'm the Deputy Executive Director for Snow Isle Libraries, and I'm filling in for Lois today, so thank you for hosting us. Along with me, we have Kristin Pifo, who I think many of you know, who is our Mount Lake Terrace Library Manager. And behind me, Vanessa Gutierrez, who is our Libraries, Snow Isle Libraries Community Engagement Manager. So, very lucky to have both of them on staff with us, so appreciate that. We appreciate this opportunity to share an update and our ongoing partnership with Mount Lake Terrace City staff and all of you. And before we get started, a big thank you to Mayor Matsumoto Wright for joining our Executive Director Lois Linger Thompson and our staff in providing a warm welcome to Congresswoman Delbenny as she visited our community library during tax preparation season. It sounds like you had a very nice visit. And we were just in DC and Congresswoman Delbenny talked about that meeting.
Wow.
Yeah, very, very exciting. So thank you for being there for that.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, great, it worked. All right, so Snow Isle Libraries centers our work around equity, diversity, and inclusion to help us achieve our vision of connecting everyone with their library. We're committed to creating welcoming and inspiring spaces to bring our community together. The Mount Lake Terrace Library is a cornerstone of our community. Mount Lake Terrace joined Snow Isle Libraries in 1986, and residents and visitors gained access to the larger Snow Isle collection, currently 1.8 million items, to choose from, check out, and enjoy. The library is the place where we gather for learning, reading, and to seek and exchange information and ideas. The power and value of a community place is seen every day at the Mount Lake Terrace Library. Snow Isle Libraries will continue its commitment to working closely with our communities to make our libraries welcoming, inclusive, and easy to use. The library supports our local businesses through access to information on topics that small businesses need, like growing their customer base, finding demographic data and market insights, and learning a new skill with LinkedIn Learning. If you haven't tried out LinkedIn Learning with your library card, which you'll hear me say a lot tonight, with your library card, it'll be free, and you can learn a new skill, anything around business. It's a really great service, so please do check it out. The library is also removing barriers by connecting our community to the beautiful outdoors by having Discover passes available to borrow. If you don't know what those are, those allow you into most of our state parks and you can check them out for free with your library card. With your library card. All right, got a convert. Yeah, there you go. It is a good cause. Yeah. The library helps our community discover something new with genealogy, auto repair, magazines from Consumer Reports to Martha Seward, World News Collections, and of course, we have eBooks and digital audiobooks, and you guessed it, all with your library card. Engaging all children in our community is a priority for the library. We provide early learning support, STEM education programs, student access cards, and homework help resources. We also partner closely with the school district to partner on literacy nights and Title I outreach events, and third graders read together, which if you haven't gone to a third graders read together event, it's pretty spectacular, and it's a perfect age to kind of bridge the gap between when people are, when kids are enthusiastic about reading and when they kind of fall off. So it's a really, really neat program. All right, so Snow Isle Libraries is also building infrastructure. We're continuing to invest in Wi-Fi access for our communities. We serve on the Snohomish County Broadband Action Team, and we're working toward equitable digital access for all. This access allows all of our community members to, I'm sorry, to participate in telehealth, job interviews, and find the information that they need. Snow Isle Libraries will continue to have laptops and Wi-Fi hotspots for checkout and provide access to Wi-Fi at the library. This essential service was prevalent during the recent windstorms, and internet usage at our libraries supported individuals and businesses and allowed them to provide some continuity of services. Snow Isle Libraries serves as a community point of distribution across our county and access to voting ballot boxes, which has been really a great service, and working with the county on that has been good. A new Equity Diversity and Inclusion, or EDI, section was added to the snowisle.org webpage to celebrate and explore three ideas: accessibility, citizenship, and EDI programs and services. Customers can browse the website in seven languages: English, Chinese, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Spanish, and Vietnamese, and we enhance the in-language browsing capabilities for a better search experience in those languages. We also serve as a cooling and heating center for the county, and with wildfire season becoming more and more prevalent with climate change, we're more often a clean air center. So thank you to City Manager Jeff Knighton and all of you for considering ARPA dollars to be directed toward the library's roof and HVAC services. Thank you. Really appreciate that. So now I'm going to turn it over to Kristin, who will share more information about our engaging programs and services.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kristin. Thank you again for, thank you again for having us here tonight. So the Mount Lake Terrace Libraries' ongoing youth events include three popular weekly storytimes, including a Russian-language storytime. We also have a semi-monthly play and learn group in partnership with Wonderland Child and Family Services. We also host Pause to Read, where children practice reading with therapy dogs, who are actually pretty good listeners and are very nonjudgmental. They never correct your pronunciation, ever. Also used to have a therapy cat. Our summer reading program began on June 1st, and it includes highlights such as Maker Mondays, a musical performance, Singing with Our Neighbors, and tween melted crayon art, which when our teen services librarian went to night out last year, the tweens said that they were really missing. We also recently hosted two multi-generational programs: rock painting and creative texture rubbings. We also continue to offer a monthly book club, so if you're ever free on the second Tuesday of the month, 5:15 to 6:15, just come on over. Our adult services librarian regularly presents at Business Impact Northwest, and she offers specifically business book librarian sessions. So entrepreneurs recently have received information on opening food truck businesses, senior concierge business, and a life cycle center. And I'm going to turn it back over to David.
Thanks, Kristin. So, we really do consider the Mount Lake Terrace Library a resource for all of you and for all of your citizens, so thank you for having us today. We'd love to invite you over to have a tour of the library anytime. We'd love to see you there and show you what's going on, and if you'd like to do a storytime, please just let us know. And now, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for being here tonight, and I think reminding us of all of the great services that you provide to our community and sharing some new ones, LinkedIn Learning, that was one I did not know about. And I will say, after a fairly exhaustive kind of look at what's in the marketplace, I just rolled out LinkedIn Learning at work for our team because it's such a great resource and a great opportunity for professional development. So I think that's super cool that our community can plug into that for free. That's really great. I mean, I would note, over 100,000 visitors in 2022, I mean, that's phenomenal. I mean, and again, I think you touched on the many different ways that you service our community, and just really, really grateful for that. I mean, I have definitely been the person sitting outside when my Wi-Fi at home wasn't working and I needed to, like, get access to an email or plug into a meeting, you know, printing things, like my kids are definite, will definitely be over regularly for the summer reading, you know, program, and just really do appreciate all of the various ways that you look to support the folks in our community and all of the good work that you do. So thank you for that.
Thank you, that's very sweet.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Can I just go off of that a little bit? I don't, I have never used LinkedIn Learning, so I just pulled it up really quick. So you download it with an app, it looks like, or you get the app and then you're able to, wow, I'm looking on the other side, you can, is it online learning or is all books and reading? So it's like taking a class?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wonderful. This is good to know. And then, just a follow-up question, do you ever offer any tutoring as well? I remember years ago, there was tutoring and computer, like, we were just talking earlier, you know, about seniors learning about computers or learning how to use Libby or that, so I was just wondering if there's still any tutoring services for, like, English or second languages or anything else? Not that you don't do enough already, but.
Well, certainly, so it's not in-person tutoring, but through the Snow Isle website, again, there is tutoring up through college age, and you can also get feedback on resumes and be able to submit things through the writing center, as far as that goes. So it's a really, really good resource. And then, what we found with our seniors and others who need technological help, oftentimes a specific class isn't as helpful as that one-on-one assistance. And so we do provide one-on-one assistance, and if it's something where you need a little bit longer time, you can book a librarian. So those business book librarians are not the only book of librarians that we offer. And so it's for around a half an hour or so of time to just sit together, and sometimes it takes a few sessions. But of course, if you're just learning a new skill, you might not want to be overloaded.
Great, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Woodard?
What just happened? Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go in a completely different direction, so let me first start by just saying thank you for being here, really appreciate that, and the presentation and the numbers. Thank you for all of that. So, that said, I realize we have our Parks and Public Works team in the room, and I hope that that's a great relationship between the three of you all, and that was my presumption, which now I walk up to my question. I know there was a point where we were having, let's just keep it simple, rodents being a problem, and I would like to think that we have handled that, but has that been an issue for you all? You want to speak to that in some type of, hopefully amicable way?
We actually do now have double coverage for both pest control through Snow Isle Libraries and through the city, and certainly I have not lately seen any rodents. It's something that, of course, needs to be tracked. Every once in a while, there will be ants or bugs or little creepy crawlies that are addressed, so it's not a current issue. Thank you for checking.
Perfect. And then, along those same lines, I recall that we did a lot of frontage work to remove a lot of shrubbage, shrubbery, whatever. Are there any other, oh, that was great, here's some other, I don't want to call that low-hanging fruit because that was probably a lot of work, but nonetheless, are there other things that you might be, oh, in addition to our roof, that'd be great as well if you addressed this, and that would be a good time to educate your council.
Well, at this point in time, we've been working with Ken Courtmanch for some painting and some signage, and there's a hope that at some point, you may have noticed there are some holes in the facade where sweet little birds cheep, cheep and crawl in. And we're hoping that at some point, that there'll be some wood that covers up the little ledges where they stand and peck, peck, peck it. I'm sorry, I have a children's librarian background, so if you notice in my storytelling, that's where that comes from.
I do want to say I'm happy to hear that there's a working relationship and hopefully a very strong one between us and you, so. Coming off the library board, that was sunsetted because we didn't need that type of interaction. It's great to hear that we're still having a good relationship.
Anyone else? Okay, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me come back. Something that Councilmember Woodard said, I guess, just for you to put in maybe a plug, if folks are interested in getting involved in Friends of the Library or ways to support the library, how would they do that?
So, our Friends of the Library group actually recently sunsetted as well. We had a very long-serving board who started having health problems. They were already looking at closing down pre-COVID, and COVID was kind of the nail in the coffin, as far as that goes. So, there are a couple of different ways to think about this. We do have a Mount Lake Terrace-specific fund with the Snow Isle Libraries Foundation. So if you are looking to specifically donate funds to the library, that would be the way to go. A person could, in fact, do a fundraiser for the library and have that money go to the foundation. We have restarted our volunteer program. We're slowly getting back into some of those normal, more normal activities, so that's a way to consider as well, to support the library. If there were a groundswell of support for restarting Friends of the Library group, it could happen, but the 501(c)(3) has been dissolved, so it would take a critical mass of at least five people willing to serve on the board.
Very helpful, thank you.
All right, so I just wanted to just ask a very, very general question. It was already covered, but for people who are listening in and may or may not know, the Wi-Fi at the library is free, and so if you had a laptop, you could bring it over there and use it?
You certainly could, and as well, if you do not have your own laptop, you can check out laptops to use on the property, or you can check out a laptop or a laptop and a hotspot to take with you so that you can continue that access from home instead of being limited to just being on the library grounds.
So that, and that's free?
That's free.
Okay, I just want people to know all these free things that can, you know, you can go to the library for.
Free with your library card.
Yes, you need to get a library card, yes. And also eBooks. How popular are they?
Very popular, yeah. And they're actually, during the pandemic, it rose very quickly and has rapidly started to challenge our physical collection, so very, very exciting times at the library.
Because even though you think that a lot of people know this, there's a lot of people out there that have no idea that you can go to the library and get free Wi-Fi, that there are such a thing as an eBook, and that you also have art that you can check out. I don't know if we can at this library, but I know at some others.
And just to highlight what you're saying, some of my best friends don't remember that they can check out an eBook from the library, so.
And one of the other services that's not well-known that we talked about before this meeting started is if you have some physical limitations to get to the library and you live within the service area, which is all of Snohomish and Island County, you can get books by mail.
Wow. Okay, oh, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mary. Yeah, along those lines, you know, I'm reminded of my first council meeting when you all came out and presented, and, you know, my interaction with the library system before that was when I was a kid, which was a few years ago, and, but that was, times have changed, and, I mean, you know, it was just checking out a book and making sure you got it back in time and whatever, and, but you guys have so many resources. And so, yeah, along the lines of, folks don't know about it, I like to say, I had no idea until, only because I was on council, you guys were giving a presentation. Is there anything we can be doing to help spread the word? I mean, it's such a great partnership and a great resource for the community, how can we let people know about that you're more than just books to borrow?
Yeah, you all are.
With a library card.
Yeah, with a library card. You're all out in the community talking all the time, and word of mouth is the best way to do that. We also have a pretty active social media, so if you want to like and share and comment on those things, that really helps us. And yeah, you know, if there's something you're excited about that you want to get more into at the library, let us know, and that can oftentimes turn into more and more advocacy, so.
Sure.
Let us know.
That's great. Follow-up on the Wi-Fi as well, I mean, I think one of the things that we've been talking about as a council is expanding broadband access to other, and making sure everybody in our community has access to Wi-Fi and the internet. So I really appreciate, again, the library being another resource, another opportunity to be able to make that available to our citizens and residents. So thank you. Thank you again for being here and reminding all of us of all the great tools and resources the library has for our community, and all the work you guys do to make it happen.
I have one last thing that you guys offer that you think everybody would know about is the printing.
Yeah.
So, how many copies can we get a month?
Well, you can get up to $7 worth of credit, and that term "credit" always confuses people because they think they owe us money. $7 worth of credit, and so a black and white print, a standard print, is $0.10 a page, and it's $0.50 a page per color. It's every week that resets on Sunday. You can also print remotely. Not every type of document can be printed remotely, but kind of the standard, your PDF, your Word document, Excel, numerous types of documents can be printed, and you can notify the library, we'll print it out. If you want to come into the library to pick it up, you can. If you want to just stand at our door and press the doorbell that we've got on our little table, we'll bring it out to you there.
Do you also have a scanner?
So our copy machine also functions as a scanner. Now, you won't be able to email yourself, so you will want to make sure that you've got a flash drive, or we have some loaner flash drives that you then get onto your email and email yourself or whoever it is that you need to get that document to.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I was going to say, such great questions and conversation, it keeps making me think of other things. So you talked about the mobile hotspots, and to Mayor Protem Wall's point, I think access to the internet is something we've talked a lot about. I'm curious, I have family who use those at a different library, and there's usually a waiting list for those. Do we, I guess, are we seeing usage at a level where folks are having to wait for access to those hotspots, or do we have enough currently to serve the needs of the community here locally?
There typically is a wait, but I'm not certain. Do you happen to know the typical wait time at this point?
I have, we are currently working with Snohomish County.
So that way, folks online can hear too, thank you.
I would add that we are currently working with Snohomish County on expanding access to hotspots and devices as well, so please note that we are working with them on making the program even stronger for the next years.
That's one, I mean, I think it's an amazing program, and I guess I ask because I would love to make sure if there's ways that we can help support that, that we at least have that conversation, so, yeah, that's awesome, thank you.
All right, anyone else? If not, I think we really are over.
Again, thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. So, next on our agenda is a review of the amendment to Snohomish County 911 interlocal agreement.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. So as mentioned, the item tonight is an amendment to the existing interlocal agreement with Snohomish County 911. And just a little bit of brief background information first on this interlocal agreement. It dates back to 1983, so this is a 40-year agreement, the original agreement is. And originally, it was called SNOCOM, if some of you remember. So that interlocal agreement was with both the cities of Linwood and Mount Lake Terrace at the time, since it was a jointly-owned operations facility. So a lot of changes have happened since then, obviously. So SNOCOM is an emergency telecommunications center, or we know it, most of us, as 911 services. It's about a 7,900-square-foot facility, which has changed. It was smaller, then it got bigger over time, and that essentially is at no cost to SNOCOM in the current agreement. So that, over that 40-year time period, Mount Lake Terrace did purchase the operations facility from Linwood, Linwood's Peace, and that buying out of Linwood happened in 2010. And since that time, also SNOCOM merged with SNOPAC to form Snohomish County 911. And since that time, also, Snohomish County 911 has moved its central operations into Everett, but they do keep this facility in Mount Lake Terrace as a backup, as a redundant facility, and they do frequently go down there, they do training. They also used it quite a bit during COVID to really keep their crew separated in case of a major sickness or something that happened during the pandemic to all of us. So, they do want to negotiate and extend that lease agreement, and we are currently in the middle of doing that. We were not able to finish by the time this deadline rolled around. I know 40 years is a long time, but it wasn't on our radar for all 40 years, actually, but we do expect to be finished negotiating that by the end of this year. This is a six-month, a little over six-month extension to that interlocal agreement. So this extends it through December 31st at the end of this year. And that is the end of that item. Are you willing to take any questions?
Do you have any questions? Councilmember Sonmore?
What they had intended for, too, is, of course, if there was an emergency up in Everett, because we had so many concerns with that building in Everett, if something was to happen to that building, where would they go to? So they're only looking at six months, so after that, they're.
So this is just, this is just an interim measure, just so we can finish working on a new agreement with them. So I do believe they want to be in the facility longer, I don't know the exact term yet, you know, a number of years additionally, but this is just so we can settle on that agreement. Just gives us additional time.
And now that we have more space, where we didn't have more space back then, it's kind of different. Are we still doing, I haven't said this word in a long time, I want to say CEO, and that's not, our emergency operations facility? Have we updated the plans? We used to go there and get training, we'd sit through, you know, all sorts of training, and we haven't really talked about that in a long time.
Yeah, the EOC's still down there, and it's being kept operational. I think that there are some plans to revamp some of the telecommunications equipment and some of the electronics down there. I think some of that, some of those computers were raided to some degree at times during COVID, during some emergency situations, but I think everything's fully operational, been replaced down there. We have spoken about numerous times at our executive leadership team meetings about getting back on some of our tabletop exercises and things like that, and now that we have some staff in place. and things like that. And now that we have some staff in place at that level, that we'll be able to continue to do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? It's been a long time since, I know I took a tour of that building, and I know the new people probably have never seen even the outside of the building, maybe. So maybe it's time that we actually did, because you talk about the SNOCOM area in the back. I don't, I don't think you can see it from the front. So, you know, I don't know if we can get into it. So that, so it's something that maybe we can think about so that we can all get a tour of what, what you're talking about. What is this area in the back that SNOCOM is renting? And, and my biggest, the thing that I remember most about that tour is the auto area where you, you maintain all, everybody's vehicles, that garage area. I don't know why that impressed me so much, but that's what I remember the most. And I just think it's probably time to have another tour. I don't know who's in charge of that.
Yeah, we can, we can facilitate that and make that happen at a time when it works for everybody. Maybe in the same day, we have the PPE for sound transit. That would, that would work out well.
Oh.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It'd be really nice to, just to follow up what you were saying, if they were having any training exercises, because that's one of the things I remember is going in there and looking at all their screens and watching the emergency calls come in and how they have to behave and how they have to act. And it was a whole production. And you, you see life on the other side. And one of the things that always hit me the most, and I always felt like we should do more follow-up with our 911 operators, is a lot of times they'd get a lot of calls, and they'd be life-threatening calls, and they would never find out if that person survived, or if they didn't, or what happened. And there's a lot of things I learned just from going on that trip to watch 911. And I think that'd be interesting. And the snowplows, you know, we could get them all up at the same time. But that would be interesting.
And, but, but on and aside, did, did the Snow Isle, Snow, what do we call it?
Snohomish 911.
Not, it's Snowco 911. Did they get the new building? And are they moving?
I, I believe so. I don't have all the details on that, because he did mention...
Because I didn't attend the last several meetings.
They have identified a new facility, and they, they do plan to move, I believe.
So when they move into that building, I always wondered if they still needed our, our building.
They, they do want to keep, keep it as a backup, I think, just for redundancy purposes, as mentioned, but also for training. And I don't think they want to be stuck to one facility if something happens.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we on to the next? Are you going to do the next?
Yes, ma'am.
The review of the easement with Snohomish County PUD for DISH.
Yes. And I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation and Parks Director again. And so this next item, as mentioned, is with an easement with Snohomish County PUD. It's, it's a pretty straightforward easement. It's our, our standard easement. But a little bit of background on this. In 2017, we issued a request for proposals for a wireless communications facility. And it's been built since then. It's the monopole up by the water tower site, and that's just adjacent to Jack Long Park, right off 58th. And this construction allows us to, and actually has already allowed us now, to move off the telecommunications equipment up there. And now we can look at recoding that two and a half million gallon water tank. Excitement, yeah. Another Public Works Director is excited about that, too. Yeah. So that, that was one of the goals, actually, to be able to address that water tank and really get some maintenance done on it. So the council in March 2023 did approve a Second Amendment that adds additional leased space for DISH Network in relation to that monopole. So to allow this additional equipment, they need more power. So there is quite a bit of equipment up there. So they need PUD to bring in new transformers and more power equipment on site. Thus, we need an easement with PUD to locate that equipment that they own on our site, even though it's, it's a leased space. It's within that same leased space that we gave to DISH Network. It's only a couple hundred square feet. So I'd take any questions on that one as well.
Do we have any questions? Comments? I guess not. So are you the next one, too?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. All right. So next is the review of the resolution approving asphalt patcher equipment. Is that our new truck?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council.
Is this the first time you're giving a report as your new?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for asking. Thank you so much. So this is a new truck to answer that question. So on March 20th, 2023, you passed Ordinance 2825, amending the 2324 biannual budget and funding pavement preservation activities by the Public Works Department, including the purchase of a truck modified with a mounted asphalt patcher in the amount of $215,000. So as it turned out, and the story's a little bit longer than this, and I realize now as I read this memo that I probably didn't include a description of what this, this truck does, and I apologize. I'll correct that on the next memo. We're having a lot of trouble getting big vehicles. Everybody is in the government. And so what we found out, once we got the quote renewed, that it was going to take 14 months and be over budget at the $215,000 by, I think it went to $253,000 or something like that, in order to get a truck and have it modified with asphalt hotbox. So we had a truck that was of equal size and had the right specifications to be used as the vehicle, the chassis and cab, to put this asphalt hotbox on. And so we decided that the best thing to do was to actually utilize that truck, which will be replaced next year anyway, was on our schedule and budget to be replaced next year, and send it down to the manufacturer, have the asphalt hotbox added to that, and then sent back up to us. So in the process of doing that, we saved $73,236 of what we would have spent had we've, had we spent the $215,000. So I felt like that was a victory. And also, the truck is in good enough shape that we were going to replace that with the amount of use that it'll get, which is mainly in summer and fall. I don't think it'll be a problem. It should last many years for us. That being said, what this truck is, is literally a hotbox. It's, you pour the asphalt into it, hot asphalt, you go to the asphalt plant, and it dumps the asphalt in the back of it, and it covers it, and then keeps it heated so that you can use the asphalt for up to two days. Instead of only having a number of hours to use it before it cools down on the top and then starts slowly cooling through the pile, there's a lot of waste associated with just dumping asphalt in the back of a dump truck and bringing it out. So hopefully, in conjunction with the asphalt zipper that we are waiting to get the final model of, we should be able to start doing some serious street maintenance. That's our hope.
Thank you.
Yay. So what we're asking for you to do, the Public Works Department, is to approve the resolution and authorize the purchase by the Public Works Department of this equipment.
And that's going to be on consent calendar next week.
Yeah. Can I answer any questions about this?
Are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say congratulations, welcome, and thank you. All bundled up together and just let the record reflect that it's always good to come to the council, say I saved you money, and this is your first one out of the box. So it's a home run, Mariner style. Thank you for that. No, seriously, for that work. I'm sure that wasn't easy to do, although it's easy to tell us. But I'm sure there's a lot of work behind finding the right price and saving us the, the dollars that we can now put somewhere else. So thank you for that.
You bet. Echo that. What he said.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we all don't need to repeat it, but we all, yeah. All right. I guess there are no other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is public comment. Do we have any public comments?
No one has signed up in person for public comments, and there's no, there are no guests online. So.
All right.
That concludes public comment.
So we'll move on to the review of the June 20th, 2023 meeting agenda, which is a very light evening. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? Okay. Oh, it's Councilmember Woodard.
Yeah, just wanted you all to know, because it's so light, be prepared for a dissertation from me.
And then next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. This one's actually serious. So I don't know who this feedback is direct to, and I hope it's landing as feedback. It has to come in the form of a story, but I'll preface it by saying, at some point, we had heard we were doing code enforcement checks, and we were starting in the city center. So I don't know where we land in terms of cycle, if we're moving elsewhere, if we're still in the city center. But that's my way to preface, to say that I got a text from a colleague or a neighbor that was just like, hey, what is this? And it was a citation. But I'll just leave it there to say that the citation didn't necessarily tell him what to do, especially if it was something that probably hasn't been done in 20 years. There was no real context. So I will say, personally, seeing the email, my first reaction was, do you think I ratted you out or something? Which was just thinking about, I hope we're not inadvertently causing some tensions with neighbors, because there was no context. It's just a citation, and he's a smart enough man to ask questions, and he knew to ask his neighbor. But in the spirit of, I imagine we're handing a lot of these citations out, might not be in, not in our interest. Double negative there. It's probably in our interest to make sure we're not causing more harm than good, I guess, is what I'm saying. And that was one example. So it's not, oh, my God, this guy is falling chicken little. But the way it unfolded for him, I thought, not very many people can text their council member to say what's going on or think to do that. And it's a good process, because actually, the thing that they need to correct, I knew exactly what they were talking about. But it wasn't me who turned him in, for the record.
There's been a few things in the past where they thought it was me, but it was not me that turned. I didn't even know about half of them. Okay. Anyone else? Oh, go ahead.
I forgot. My policy is identify a problem and also maybe come with a pathway out of that. So what I was thinking was, people are really taking advantage of QR codes. So maybe there's something as simple as a QR code on the form, that so it's not buying more money. It's a rubber style. I don't know how QR codes work. But nonetheless, point remains that it's something else on a website that people want more info, they can go there. And again, I'm really thinking more about the interpersonal relationships between, between neighbors. We have a good relationship. So when I got it, it didn't escalate. I immediately just went, calm down, man. You know, we'll figure this out. I do not know what you're talking about. But again, if there's problems in the neighborhood, code enforcement, I can see how that could add fuel instead of remedy.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I think it's important when we notice a problem that we provide a path to correcting the problem immediately and not leave somebody, you know, uncertain about what next steps are. So I will definitely take that comment to heart and see what we can do to, to make that problem more effective and refine our process.
All right. Well, I have something. Councilmember Woodard and I were at the Shoreline State of the City breakfast this morning. I didn't realize it was 7:00 AM until...
I did.
You did. And so therefore, you did not RSVP. But a lot of things happened. I'm not going to talk about that. But I walked away with their events calendar here. And I'll just leave it with our city manager so that we can look at this and see, you know, ideas, or if you want to take a look at it, I'll just pass it on that way. And then it can end up at our city manager's area. And also, the, the report that was given by the mayor and the city manager and so forth, that Shoreline has accomplished. It's, I, I think that that is something that we can do, because we've accomplished a lot, too. So I'm sitting there going, oh, my God, Shoreline's done all of this. And I'm thinking, well, so have we. So it's just an idea. Again, it's, it's, and what they did was, they held it in their council chambers. So the, the dais is over there, and then they had round tables, I don't know how many. But it's about the same size as this. And, and then the food was out in the hallway. I, I mean, it's, it's, and so that's, I was telling our city clerk that that's, that's something that we can do here. And with other, like our boards and commissions, you know, to say thank you, you know, have them come for a nice lunch or dinner or whatever. But we can do it here, which we couldn't do before. I don't know why. Maybe we'd never thought of it. So that's all I have. Does anyone have anything else before we adjourn? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.